We're back on the record. It is 10:56 a.m. We're here again for this regular meeting dated July the 16th, 2019, and we're on item number 19, Budget Workshop, to review and discuss the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget submitted by the following departments. We're gonna have the Health Department, the Tax Assessor Collector, and then any other department. We'll start with the Health Department. Good morning, Ms. Whitley. Everybody should have a proposed budget that was submitted by Ms. Whitley along with a memo.
Good morning.
And Ms. Whitley had requested an increase in, was it only one line item?
Yes.
And that was miscellaneous?
That's correct.
Okay, and that increase is from $3,487 up to $4,627.
That's correct.
So if you wouldn't mind, just explain to us the reason for the increase.
Okay, there's three reasons for the increase. One of them is the insurance that the Health Department has to pay every, I think, three years for a bond, an insurance bond, and this is our year to pay it. Last time it was paid, I think it was in 2017.
What is that amount?
For the...
The insurance bond?
The last amount that was paid was $537, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the other two requests is for the Health Department to become a member of the National Association of County and City Health Officials and the Texas Association of County and City Health Officials. The one for the national is $450 a year, and the one for Texas is $2,500 a year. The one for the national, it cannot be absorbed in any other grants. That's the one that's for $450. And the one for the Texas, it is gonna be absorbed in the grants, but it has to be split, well, it's split three ways. It'll be split between two of the grants and the general funds. So I'm asking for a total of $11.40.
So the $2,500, the county's responsible for 33 percent of that, and the other two would be paid out of your state grants?
Yeah.
The other two-thirds?
Yes.
Is it imperative, or what are the benefits of belonging to both of these associations?
The benefit of belonging to the National Association, that give us, we'll be able to apply directly for CDC grants. Right now, we go through DSHS, the state, and this would allow us to at least compete for the CDC grants and also, you know, afford us to be, to also be able to network with other smaller health departments that are our, that's our size, and we can also apply directly for mentorship programs through CDC.
What about the Texas Association?
The Texas Association, that's basically for networking, and it allow us to at least network and, I guess, do other programs with other state, state of Texas health departments, but it really would benefit so we'll be able to at least see what other smaller health department our size is doing, and what other kind of programs that we can offer to Orange County.
Does that open you up to any other grant opportunities?
The Texas, it does, but that will be in partnership with other smaller health department within Texas. The national one is really the one that will benefit towards grants because, like I said, we can, we could apply directly through CDC, and that's the Center for Disease Control.
On the Texas Association, if we were to say no to that, would that be a terrible thing for the Health Department? That's $2,500. It just seems like a lot of money, and I realize the county's only gonna have to pay $834 of that, but just would like a better feeling as to why we're spending that kind of money on belonging to an association, especially when the National Association is only $450.
Well, for the Texas, what really helps is I will be able to at least pick up the phone or network with other health departments that's in Texas and find out what kind of grants or what other kind of programs that they are offering.
And you're not able to do that if you're not part of that association?
Well, I am, but I'll have firsthand knowledge, 'cause they meet every month.
Okay. And you're not able to attend the meetings if you're not a member?
No, you can't.
Do you feel like that it could be given an opportunity, you could get more grants to, I mean, obviously you can't pay for a grant out of that, or the two-thirds is set, but do you feel like that $834 investment would net a lot more?
Yes. This year, we had, the DSA, at the state level, they were cutting funds for health departments, and it really affected the small health departments. I was able to attend the Texas Association, and they actually lobbied for small health departments, and that benefited us a great deal. And it, the plan that they were choosing that was gonna affect small health department, it didn't pass. And I was allowed to attend that, attend that meeting even though I was not a member, because Chambers County, Chambers County, Port Arthur, and Beaumont were members, and it was really affecting the southeast Texas. And Chambers County is the county that invited me to participate with them.
Thank you, Ms. Whitley. Any other comments or questions from the court? Thank you very much. Move on to item 19B, the Tax Assessor Collector.
Judge, she asked for an increase in the certification classes as well.
I'm sorry? I missed it. On the certification class increase, the equipment expense line item is the only increase you requested, and it's $530?
Yes, and the reason why I asked for an increase, the last two years, that class brought in a total of $7,000, each year. Last year brought in a total of $7,241, but we only budgeted for $4,869.24. And this year, we budgeted for $5,450, and right now, we're at $5,742, and we do have some more classes that we're offering up until September.
And you have some other equipment needs?
Yes, we do.
And this $530 will be well offset by the revenue that's coming in from the classes?
Yes, we plan on implementing the pool certification program, because as you know, we have to inspect the pools. So we want to implement that program.
Any questions regarding that?
She also increased supplies by $20.
The what?
The supplies, office supplies, by $20.
Yes, okay. The office supplies?
Yes, sir.
That was based off the history?
Yes.
Again, that'll be covered by the revenue that's coming in for those classes?
That's correct.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, Ms. Cook.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody should have a proposed budget along with two memos from Ms. Cook dated July, I'm sorry, June the 25th and June the 26th. How are you this morning?
I'm fine, first of all. Thank you very much. And I will say, as you mentioned with Commissioner Kirkendall, that as I had Lisa Finn with me today, we say this is the Tax Assessor Collector's. Lisa's expertise is assessment, mine is collection, so if I have to refer to her, please allow that.
Sure.
I have, the substantial increase, as you see, is postage, due to postage of explanation. This is a voter registration, mass mail-out year, and a substantial increase in the cost of those. The cost of the extra cards for voter registration cards, if we order at one time, then the cards could be four cents each. This is at our expense. If we order a few along, they are as much as 19 cents each. So we prefer to order them all at once, with permission, to save that money, four cents to 19 cents each on a voter registration card, the blank cards that we print in our office. The other increase that, well, most of this is the postage. I have the, which shows the outside services, which falls in, that's the postage. Increase in travel, Lisa and I have to have so many classes a year. Our travel has increased a lot with the cost of, rising cost of everything. Our registration, where we have to be with our association, we have to be members of, it has also increased. I know that sometimes when we turn in a travel voucher, it appears, we will have our meals, we'll have our gas. We have been requested to present a, an agenda. I wanna say that there are times that we have been to conferences that possibly, if we paid so much for our registration, we had so many meals included, which we take that into consideration. However, sometimes we've been to these conferences and there is no food, or they run out of food. And then that would be at our own expense, you know, to put back, and we don't ever put in, you know, more on our vouchers than what we're going to need. I just wanted to say that, that there have been times that we've gotten in the line, and there was no food left. And several times, our NVBA partners have been with us, offered to get food for us, which we declined, but I just wanted to say that. It's not that we mind giving an agenda to the auditor's office, but, you know, we're not going to ever put anything on a voucher that we're not gonna need. And if we don't need it, we will return it to the county.
I'd just like to add while you're on that subject, that when you come back from the conference, if you've had to buy any meals that were supposed to have been provided, if you put that on your expense report, that should be reimbursed.
We usually don't, but I appreciate that.
You should.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We usually don't. Thank you, thank you for that.
Sure.
Last year, we had one counterfeit bill that, in our miscellaneous expense, that we had one $100 bill that was counterfeit. We do have a machine that counts money and also detects counterfeit. At our last conference last month, they told us just to expect more and more. We're checking into even a more sensitive machine. They are quite expensive. I did not include that on, because we don't have the information yet on that. They have warned us to expect more and more counterfeit bills. You know, nothing's fail-proof. But that did also have to be out of, by miscellaneous, which I didn't have funds in there to cover that $100 bill. Just, just added that information. I think that's, I did ask for two deputies, who you have, I believe, have that information. And it's because of duties that have greatly increased. I had one staff member that was there for almost 10 years that had left, and one of the deputy clerks took over that position with much, many, quite a few more duties added to her position that she already has.
So I just want to clear that up. You said you asked for two deputies, but you asked for two deputies increasing the wages.
I'm so sorry, yes, correction.
Just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everybody.
Correction. Thank you. I'm not asking for more staff.
Do you know the percentage of increase?
I have discussed that with the judge. It's what I have asked. I apologize.
Angela, do you have it handy?
I don't, I don't have the percentage. I can tell you the dollar amount.
And this is the recommendation I made whenever the auditor was working on salaries for this department, and I discussed that with Ms. Cook yesterday. Angela?
The proposal was $15.45 an hour. One employee was making $14.42 an hour, and so that's a $1.03 increase. The other employee was making $15.19 an hour, and that recommendation through the judge was $15.92, which is a 73 cent increase per hour.
So what I did on that one was do the 3% raise, because she wouldn't have even gotten a 3% raise if we kept her at $15.45. So I recommended a 3% raise there. The other one doesn't have quite as much years of service, and I just recommended going with what Ms. Cook asked for, which is $15.45 in the first one. Actually, reverse that. The first one will be $15.92, and the second will be $15.45. If the court agrees to that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So while Ms. Cook is here, this is what I plugged into the budget for her. She requested an increase, were you finished? On outside services to $81,146.39. That's an increase from the amended 2019 budget was $68,000, but her actual expenses in 2018 were $73,339.30. Y'all can see that on your screens, and I plugged in a value of $80,000 even for the proposed 2020 budget. Ms. Cook did also, I believe, time my place here, had requested to keep the rentals line item at $2,900. However, based on the history, I reduced that by $500 to $2,400. And I just want to ask you, Ms. Cook, do you see or foresee any issue with that? The highest amount was, the last two years were, 2017, actual expenses for that line item was $2,270.34, and in 2018, it was $2,283.34.
Yes, sir.
So I reduced that to $2,400, just to try and help offset some of that increase on the outside services. It's not a lot, but it'll help a little bit. And I think everything else I have in here exactly as you requested it.
I will say, we, I've noticed some waste in our coffee service and have, we have, we're going to implement like a one-cup serving, and the employees have all agreed they would prefer to just supply their own coffee. With 16 people, it fluctuates. It seemed like it's a little expensive to me to have that. I didn't include that there. This was a last-minute decision right before I presented this. So those, that would be a small saving, but we have decided that that's something that we can do without making that much coffee.
Is that in your office supplies line item?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to leave it at the amount, which is $12,000, and then we'll just look at it next year?
I would appreciate that. We don't have time to get the numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the court?
Got a big election coming up, 2020.
Well, we need those voter registration cards.
Yes, ma'am.
If you want the other information, Judge, on the collections, do you want that now?
Let's wait till we talk about all the other part of it, the revenue and expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Walton, are you needing to get to court? Okay, so let's move to bring back up the CPS budget. Mr. Minnick came and presented the proposed budget for the CPS. Let me pull that up while, and I know there were some other questions. Particularly, I remember Commissioner Kirkendall had some questions that we wanted to have Ms. Walton come back to data to just talk about it a little further. So she is here, and I've also got it pulled up, so you can see on your screens the amounts that I proposed, and I'll also read that off here in just a few moments. Mr. Kirkendall?
Yes, sir. We have had an opportunity to have a discussion as well. It looks like that outside services are still only being needed, and that at this time, it probably do not be financial, a financial benefit to the county to pursue.
That's on the pauper attorney?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Do you have anything else you want to add about that, or does?
There is a model, you know, I think the question, the terminology that's used, public defender's office for CPS cases. There's, there's a model, actually, that we could go by, if y'all chose to ever do that in Travis County. It's called the Office of Parent, parental representation, and a separate office for the children's representation.
Which county?
That's in Travis County.
They got lots of money.
They do, and they got 1.2 million people there, too. But those budgets, for representation for just the parents is a budget of like 3.4 million for six lawyers and that support staff. And then the children's budget was 1.1 million. I believe that's just 1.2 millions in support staff. But they also need occasionally have outside counsel appointed. I think we submitted some information maybe for Orange County. Their budget just for paupers attorneys is $240,000. And I think Matt was suggesting that we would need to raise our paupers attorney to $120,000. Again, just as a reminder, that's not for the county attorney's office. That's for outside counsel, counsel to represent the children and the parents in those cases.
And I just want to add, Matt did a wonderful job in your absence last week.
Good.
He presented us with information, the questions that were asked. He sent us an email with some follow-up answers, which I think probably cut down on some questions we had for you here today about this subject and some other subjects regarding the reason that CPS expenses have gone up so much. So here's, here's what I plugged in, and let me also state exactly what the request was from Mr. Minnick. On the jury expense, he recommended increasing that from $1,000 to $5,000. That is the number that I keyed in for the expenditure for that line item. On the pauper attorney, he suggested increasing that from $42.5 to $120,000. Last year, we spent $85,000, and I keyed in a value of $90,000 for the proposed 20 budget. For the CPS court reporter, he had requested $10,000. I left it at $7,000 just based on the history, but I do realize that may have to go up because of increased jury trials and things like that. And then the next line item is for bailiff. It's $2,500 now. He requested to increase it to $5,500. I met in the middle, probably not quite the middle, at $3,500. I'm hoping that maybe we can utilize some of our bailiffs that we have here when needed, and that won't cost so much. And that's actually a recommendation that Mr. Minnick made to me last Friday. So maybe we can even spend less than $2,500, but I did agree to increase that to $3,500. Then CPS transcripts, currently that amount is $500. Matt recommended increasing it to $5,000. I increased it to $1,000. Let's see what happens next year, and if we need to go up from there the following year, I think that would be fine. And then the miscellaneous line item, he left at $500, and I did as well. So that would be an increase. Let me just read off what the actual was for 2018. The actual amount spent on CPS for 2018 was $94,407. The original budget and the amended budget for 2019 is $54,000 even. Year-to-date, as of April 30th, 2019, we had spent $73,338.46, and I have proposed a budget of $107,000 for fiscal year 20 in the proposed budget. We may go over that amount. I hope we don't, but if we do, I think that, and I feel like that that would be covered by some unspent funds in the rest of the jury fund, and if not, we do have a surplus balance that we could rely on there. Again, I hope we don't have, but I think we're, I think we're covered.
Okay, thank you.
I feel good about it, and hopefully the rest of the court does, and you and Matt will as well.
What is the, I see the $107. What is the increase for that budget?
It'd be from $54,000 to $107,000.
$53,000.
How much?
$53,000.
How much did we give the co at Walgreens?
$276,000. But we're gonna pay that out of this budget year. I think, is that right?
It's still money.
Yes, sir. Judge Mitten? Judge Mitten should have been here last time that we had a budget workshop, but I didn't invite her. And the reason is, I didn't realize that she had a request for a salary adjustment on her budget proposal.
So there was actually two increases. The first one was for sophomore, $4,700.
All right, and that's just something that I knew we were gonna have to add, and I didn't, didn't feel like you wanted to come talk about that unless you just wanted to.
But I didn't want to go with it either.
Right.
So the other one is, I am asking for a salary increase for my court clerk. She currently makes $14.94. I'm requesting a 51 cent an hour raise to bump her to $15.45 an hour, plus any cross-the-board increases county-wide. So at my 51 cent an hour, it's a $1,060.80 increase in her salary, not including any hopeful cross-the-board increases. I do realize that on paper, it shows that she has only been employed for four years with the county.
Right.
She was actually hired in February of 2010 as a relief clerk for Judge Hall. In February 15, she came to my office as a part-time court clerk, working 30 hours a week.
Right.
And then May of 15, she became a full-time court clerk. So she has been employed with the county for nine years, just not as full-time.
And just realize in the past, we've always based it off of full-time in all those departments, and that's the way. The third page of your packet here shows a JP court clerk comparison. It shows years of service and the hourly rate that each of those clerks are making. I just also want to say that Judge Mitten had provided me this yesterday. I included that in your packets, and that just talks about from 1998 to 2019, it shows the difference between the JP salaries plus their car allowance versus the other elected officials, countywide elected officials, and so I just want to provide that to you since Judge Mitten had given that to me.
What it's showing is historically, because when the county gives a cross-the-board, let's say, for instance, 3% raise, the JP's salary to the other elected officials, the increase becomes larger and larger, as you can see on the right-hand column.
Look at it.
Historically, every approximately 10 years, there's some type of salary increase given to the JPs to close that gap, to bring it back closer together. I realize we don't make the same amount in that, but when you give a 3% across-the-board, it was to say that the other elected officials broke further and further away from us. And I was just asking if the Commissioners Court will evaluate doing something with possibly bringing that gap closer together.
Which I think I tried to do a couple of years ago when we did this different percentages based on the bracket, but probably not quite enough.
Are you requesting to make, I'm sorry, Judge?
It's okay.
Are you requesting to make as much as the department heads are employed in?
No, sir. Well, I don't know what the department heads know.
Not department heads, the elected officials.
No, sir. That's not the request. Just as you can see on there, that, for instance, in 1998, there was a $10,680 difference between a JP and the other elected officials. They gave a $3,000 car allowance, brought it down to an $81,000 difference. And then in 2007, with cross-the-board increases, it had spread to being a $12,000 increase, or $12,000 difference between the JPs and the other elected officials. And then in 2009, it became a $13,000 a year spread. 2010, they gave a car allowance back, which dropped the spread down to a $6,700 spread.
And now it's back up to $10,207 in the current fiscal year. I don't think she was asking for anything.
No.
When she handed this to me yesterday, she wanted to bring my attention and ask us to maybe consider doing something in the future.
Right, and the judge and I had this...
Since I had it, I wanted to provide it to y'all.
Yeah, the judge and I had this discussion, I don't remember if it was last budget or two budgets ago, and I just felt it was better to understand in a spreadsheet form, so you could see what I was talking about, how the spread grows. And then historically, approximately over 10 years, the Commissioners Court has done something to bring that closer back together.
Rachel Reginald, do you know what y'all might compare to other size counties?
So in the proposed budget, I did add the software increase from $44.17 to $5,500. And then on the employee, on the court clerk, Angela, can you state what we did there?
I don't have it.
Is it $15.92? Is that what the amount comes out to be with the $15.45 plus 3%?
Yes.
That's what I included in the proposed budget. Of course, that's subject to consensus from the court. Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I want to also add, before you walk away, I had made some other changes to the JPs on the auto allowance.
Yes, sir.
Last year, the auto allowance was $7,200. I reduced that to $4,800 and moved the difference over to salaries. That's something that we did similarly for the constables. I think it was two years ago. And say, item that Commissioner Cooper, I think, brought up for the Commissioners, when we talk about the Commissioners' road and bridge budgets here in a little bit, I'll bring that up as well, that I did the same thing there. As far as the JPs go, since you're here, do you have a comment regarding that proposal?
I can only speak for myself. You can put my whole $7,200 over into my salary. It only helps my retirement.
That's what the constables said, too.
That's my personal opinion. I can't speak for the other five, though.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
The drawback to that, Judge, would be, I mean, this is just going it out there. In 10 years, when none of us are here, or 20 years, whatever, and they look back like this chart you give us, which I thought somebody put a lot of work into that, but comparing, they're gonna say, well, the, on this date, the court... which I thought somebody put a lot of work into that, but comparing, they're gonna say, well, the, on this date, the court dropped the car allowance for the
JP.
JPs, and you know, and then somebody's gonna come back and go, well, they're not getting paid. But really and truly, you are, because it's in there. Same thing with the constables and us, but in the long run, somebody looks back at, at history. They're not gonna know the details and they're gonna say-
Well, like you said, if somebody takes the time to put another spreadsheet together, it's gonna show that.
Yeah. They won't know the particulars unless they dig deep enough, but-
Correct, yes, sir.
Still, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Judge. The next two items in your packet are requests for a salary increase in the Roden Bridge Three Department and in the Roden Bridge Two Department. You have those memos in your packets. And I did include those increases in the proposed budget. That's an increase on an employee in Roden Bridge Three from seventeen fifty to eighteen dollars an hour. And in Roden Bridge Two, from sixteen forty-eight to seventeen fifty-one an hour. And that was to bring him up with some other similar employees with similar experience, I believe. Is that correct?
It still leaves him below the other employees with similar experience, but, I mean, with similar duties. But-
Helps close the gap a little bit.
It helps close the gap and I, next year, we'll probably come back and close it a little bit more till he's equal to. My theory on employees is that if you do an equal work, you ought to get equal pay.
Yes, sir.
I've never been a seniority person.
You also added the three percent to that one.
Yeah, the current?
Yes.
All right. The sheriff is here and we went over his budget proposal last time. Before I start on that, we also have the district attorney here. And do either one of y'all need to leave and get to work? Do I need to take one of you before the other? I just saw him and started with him, so the sheriff had requested some additional employees. He also made some other changes in some other line items, which actually netted a zero difference. I think you increased the fuel and oil, but you decreased another one to offset that.
Yeah, there was a couple of line items that we just moved some money around, but it was still a net-net zero for that.
The actual increases that added to his budget were for two jagers and one dispatcher. Now, the one dispatcher is shared among five other entities, I believe. So the sixty-five thousand and change that he brought to us at our last workshop will only be an increase. I say only, will be an increase to the county of thirty thousand dollars and he's also working to try to get some of all of that covered. But in the Commissioners Court line item where that match is made on dispatchers, we did increase it by thirty thousand, just in case, just trying to prepare for worst-case scenario. And if he's able to get a couple of the other entities to come up with that, he'll let us know and we'll adjust it back down. But in the proposed budget, I did include the two jagers and the dispatcher. And I just wanted to explain to the court why you wouldn't see a total increase in his budget for the dispatcher. That's a shared cost between all the other entities in Hardin County's. A portion of that shared cost is thirty thousand and that's in the Commissioners Court budget under that line item. So he increased from eighty-two thousand to a hundred and twelve thousand. Again, if the sheriff's able to get that covered, he'll let us know.
Right. And another note, just, you're aware because you see the numbers there too, but there's gonna be a substantial of unspent, unspent salaries rolling over of just not being able to fill some vacancies. You know, we, I mentioned before, we're still competing with other law enforcement agencies on, on that very small pool of applicants for sworn law enforcement positions and jagers too. But we're, we're gonna have gone through the entire FY nineteen budget with, with probably two deputy positions that's been open. That's a substantial amount of money that's gonna be rolling over as a surplus back to the county, so just to bring your attention to that.
I also wanna add that there was a, an error caught this year that happened two years ago with the chief deputy's salary. I believe it was about five hundred and sixty-seven dollars difference. Back in two thousand and one, two thousand and two, when the court adopted that pay scale for the deputies, the chief deputy is supposed to make at least a, no matter how long he's been here, at least an LE-nine rank, or LE-nine, that's not rank, it's years of service, pay grade. And when I did the different percentage amounts for that year, the two who are LE-nines were in a lower bracket and got a higher percentage raise and the chief deputy was in a higher bracket and got a lower percentage raise. So the sheriff has agreed not to fix it in this budget year or even try to go back and retroactive back, but to fix it in the next budget year. I passed that on to the auditor, who passed it on to her assistant, and she did make that correction. So that is another difference that you would see. You probably won't notice it in the budget because it's a five hundred and sixty-seven dollars plus fringes is not probably gonna catch your eye here, but in the, what I call the latest pages, when that comes out later, you'll notice it there. And I don't think I told the sheriff, but that has been corrected.
And that's just again to correct, you had an LE-nine and effectively what happened is after that, we, we ended up with two values of an LE-nine. We had two salaries of an LE-nine and so you can imagine the headache that came with that. Which one do you go with? And so that's just some housekeeping issues there and, and so that, that brings it back up to, to where there's a court one LE-nine pay scale. There's actually four employees that qualify for that as we sit right now, as far as I understand. Maybe, how many are offered? Is that what you came up with, Judge? I think, I think I've got, I've got four that have reached that LE-nine level, so.
Any comments or questions for Sheriff? Sheriff, anything else?
Thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sheffield? Good morning.
Good morning.
I wonder how we could quieten that thing down?
I have to crack my ass. I'm proud of that. I'm proud of you, chief.
All right. I meant to bring in and I didn't. The proposal that Mr. Sheffield made before, but I'm gonna try to remember it and I'm sure he has it in front of him and he'll, he'll remain it. But I do remember what I asked the auditor to include in his budget when we worked on that earlier this week. I know that Mr. Sheffield had requested a new paralegal secretary to add a third secretary to his office. I asked the question about going with a full, a full-time or part-time and of course, he requested a full-time. I was hoping he'd say part-time, but he didn't. But I did, thank you, I did include in the proposed budget, a full-time paralegal secretary. So that is included under the increase of salaries clerical, so you'll notice an increase there along with all the related fringes that go with that position. So the current budget is seventy-one thousand, seven eighty-two and that increases to one-hundred-eight thousand, two oh three. Mr. Sheffield also requested some other increases and so I'm gonna start with the outside services appeals line item. And in that line item, the amended, or the current budget is seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Looking over the history, the highest year was in two thousand and sixteen, it was eleven thousand, one thirty-eight. And then in two thousand and seventeen, it went down to two thousand, three seventy-five. And in two thousand and eighteen, it was seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Mr. Sheffield noted that there's an uptick in serious crimes, requiring a no plea, no plea bargains to settle and requested an increase to ten thousand dollars. I opted to leave it at seventy-five hundred and just continue to watch that. And we have this, I'll call it a warning from the DA that it may go up and so we know that and if we have to do a budget amendment during the middle of the year, we would certainly have that warning, I guess is what I'm gonna call it. We were put on notice that that may go up.
I appreciate that, ma'am.
So we would definitely consider that and I understand and I think the rest of the court does as well. The next item that was requested was an increase to travel and training expenses from seven, I'm sorry, from three thousand, five hundred dollars to seven thousand dollars. Again, I looked at the history there, also took into consideration that the DA has a source of other funds for training from the LE-OSE funds. And I did increase that line item, again, based on the history from thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred, but not quite to the amount that Mr. Sheffield requested, which was seven thousand. Again, we would watch that as well and if it has to be increased later, we would take that into consideration as well.
Thank you.
Then the next increase that Mr. Sheffield requested was for the pay gap of investigators. And I did not include any increase there for the investigators. And I'd be glad to discuss the reasons why. Mr. Williford's here and if Thomas was here, I'd discuss it with him as well. The reasons given was trying to equate the DA investigators to the law enforcement, the deputy sheriffs' pay scale. And I just didn't think that that was fair to do that. Not that it's not fair, I guess I shouldn't say that, but I, I think that what a deputy sheriff does and what a county attorney and district attorney investigator does is two separate, different, totally different job duties. Also, they get the vehicle allowance, which is automatic, no matter how many miles that they drive. And I just feel like that they're compensated well. And I, I did not agree to include it, but again, all it would take would be three commissioners to say what they wanted done and it would be added in. But that's, that's where I put it and that's the reason why.
Judge, I'm-
Nothing against Mr. Sheffield, Mr. Thomas, or Mr. Williford. That's just my, my thoughts on, on the subject.
Can I speak on that, Mr. Cooper?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Judge. And, and the judge is the budget officer and he's put this together and it takes a lot of work and I appreciate that. But just like he, he said then, this is his recommendation. He's not speaking for the other commissioners. The way I look at that, what I did last, in fact, I did speak with the judge on this, the last budget workshop, we had, we had overall request for increase, not just from your department, the sheriff's department, everybody else, and it come to a certain figure. So where I stood on that, and I still stand, is your investigators are not any more important than the judge's court clerk secretary that he's requesting, in my opinion. Everybody deserves a raise, so what I did is say, let's cut that in half. Let's, let's give everybody, this requesting an increase, an increase, in other words, in the sheriff's department, my, my suggestion would be giving one judge instead of two. He needs three or four. I already know that, but in order to be equal and fair to everybody that's asking for something, how can we say that an investigator is more important or less important than someone else? So that's where I stand on that. I'm gonna be voting against this budget, simply because I don't agree with some things on it. But as far as fairness, my, my suggestion would be, if we're gonna give someone something, let's give everybody this, the JP clerk and whomever else it might be, that one. So that's Commissioner Precinct's opinion on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the court? Mr. Sheffield?
The only thing is, my, I just wanted to point out to the court that based on law enforcement scales, and such wages would rise based on experience, but accordingly, my investigators maintain and keep that same position that they start out in. And I was hoping to just get something, so that they're not at the lowest end of the spectrum that it comes.
Yes, sir. And I completely understand. And that's just my recommendation. Again, if, if the court disagrees, and I know at least one does, we go with what the majority decides to do. I just voiced my opinion or what my recommendation is. Again, I love every one of y'all and I appreciate the job that y'all do and I'm not trying to say anything otherwise. But that's just where I, where I felt on that decision. You wanna have anything further?
David, whenever we start taking consideration, the vehicle allowance and the county attorney's investigator, not taking one. Salaries were pretty equal and that's kind of what I looked at. To try to come to my decision, would be happy to entertain, you know, something else at a later time, but that's what I looked at, I think. How much was the auto allowance? I think eight thousand, maybe. And so when you add that to their salaries, then I think what we're asking for is pretty close. And so that, that was my decision based on that. I do know that we've been all stare in travel and auto allowances lately. And so the fact that, I think it's probably right now generous, although I understand having to use your own vehicle and the appreciation of your own vehicle, because I go through the same process. So, but that, that's why that, that I'm at the hole right now.
Well, I certainly appreciate each and every one of your time and consideration for, in our budget. And I know it's difficult, difficult decisions and all, but I respect it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sheffield. Anything further? All right. Regarding the proposed budget, I don't have a printout ready to hand to everybody and the reason is, I specified a bit of time going through and looking at the expenditures and trying to get those lined out for each department. And I don't quite have the revenues on the different line items nailed down or keyed into the budget. So I don't have a, a proposed budget printed ready for you to look at. All the expenditures are there for all four of the funds, that being the Roden Bridge, General Jury Fund and the Interest and Sinking Fund. Those are all four funds that rely on, add the law and taxes to, to make those expenditures. I've got some notes here. These were put together by Ms. McKinnon and they are on your screens and I'm gonna go over each item. The Waste Collection Center, which is what I decided to call it, because when you called it a collection center, it sounds like we're collecting money. And we're not. We're collecting waste, so I changed the name of that budget to Waste Collection Center. They will not change the name of the sign that's gonna be printed unless the commissioner wants to do that. It's still gonna say Citizens Collection Station or Center, whatever it is that we've decided on three or four weeks ago with Misty. But we changed that, I believe, what I did was I took the proposed budget, or the budget that we put together for the three months of the current fiscal year and I multiplied it by four to create a current year, a full year of expenses. It came to seventy-six thousand and some change. I forecasted that we would collect about forty thousand in permits. I hope we collect at least that much. I don't know if we will, but we had to have a place to start and that's where I started. Also added in the building maintenance budget, I added the Crocker Street Building and a line item of five thousand dollars for just regular maintenance and repairs. The utilities will be paid out of the same line item that we pay the courthouse and annex utilities out of. I adjusted the, already said that, permit fees to forty thousand on the Waste Collection Center. The Candace added, or made some adjustments in the Commissioners Court budget to the phone system note and interest. And then Floodplane had her add back. I was planning to pay off the vehicles for the emergency management and floodplain in this current budget year and I took that out of the floodplain budget. Candace added it back in because they're both tied together and we can't pay off the emergency management vehicle because it's tied to a grant. When we set that up with the grant, it was to pay out over four years, so if I paid it off this year, if we paid it off this year, then we would lose money from, from ENPG to pay on that note. So that's added back in. On item number five, I included an amount in the JP-two budget. That's to renovate his building. Right now, the budgetary figure that we have from the contractors is between forty and fifty thousand. I let, I set it at the lower rate of forty thousand. In the Extension Agents Office, they were taking the equipment rental, the Xerox machine out of office supplies, causing that line to go over. So we created a line in there for office machine rental, just like all the other departments have, and added seven hundred and thirty-five dollars to pay the Xerox copier. In the Roden Bridge Departments, each Roden Bridge, we added a five hundred dollar line item for IT expenses. We have been using the Technology Department budget to buy some IT parts and what have you for each of the Roden Bridge Departments. And the auditor called that to my attention. That's how it come out of Roden Bridge and not the General Fund. So we created that line item in each of the Roden Bridge Departments to tow those expenses to. Candace is reminding us about the retirement rate and we did agree earlier to set that at fifteen percent. That is what is in the proposed budget. The adjustment that I requested for the administrative assistant in the county judge's office has been increased to the twenty dollars an hour. And that's a change in classification from administrative assistant to court coordinator. Then we made the adjustments that Ms. Cook requested and we went over in court earlier on the two deputy clerks in her office. That's included. The new dispatch position is included, but the, again, just reiterating what I've already said, that additional amount is in the Commissioners Court budget under that line item. line item. The two new correction officers are included in the Sheriff's budget. The adjustments to the light equipment operators in Roden Bridge Three and Two are included in the proposed budget. Also, the adjustment to the JP relief clerk hours and Roden Bridge Three relief clerk, although I think that's supposed to be Roden Bridge Two, isn't it?
It's not Three.
I think it's Two.
I speak Two.
So in other words, what Candace did, the person who works full-time in that office, if her number of hours have increased for vacation or what have you, she increased the hours for the temporary clerk in each of those positions to make sure that that could be covered. The adjustment that was requested by Judge Minton is included for the court clerk.
Is there any decrease in the relief clerk?
There was.
Was that in mine?
No, because that was just headed last year. And you had the same clerk. So I think it was an increase. Then the adjustment on the IT department technician, I don't remember his current hourly rate, but we agreed, or seemed like we had a consensus to increase. That's twenty-five dollars an hour, so that's included. The new paralegal secretary in the DA's office at the rate that Mr. Sheffield requested, sixteen forty-eight an hour. Then I did make those adjustments to the Roden Bridge County Judge and JP Auto allowances, and the amount that I reduced those moved over to our salaries. Made the adjustment to the chief deputy in the Sheriff's Office, as I mentioned earlier. Also adjusted the other line items that the sheriff requested, which netted a zero increase or decrease on the operational part of his budget. The temporary salary, or temporary hourly rates on temporary employees was not, they did not receive a three percent increase on temporary. Only full-time and part-time employees received a three percent across the board increase, plus these other changes that are discussed in here. Included an amount in the Commissioner's Court budget for redistricting. That's thirty thousand dollars. We signed that agreement last November, and that's budgeted now for the redistricting, which will happen next year. The financial administration line item had to be increased. I don't recall the amount it is now. It seems like it's around eighty-four thousand, or maybe eighty-six thousand. That increased to ninety-four thousand, six eighty-two. And the reason is, the amount of our audit, outside audit, has an increase for next year, and our software has an increase for next year. Banking services, I increased that from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred based on the information that Debbie has provided to me and Candace, and we feel like that's going to cover it. If it doesn't, I think there'll be other line items that will be able to cover that if it goes over there. But I think we, I think we have it covered. Again, talking about the dispatch match, it increased from eighty-two thousand to a hundred and twelve thousand. There was a health insurance line item in the Commissioner's Court budget that was eighteen hundred that had to be increased to nineteen oh one. The emergency management match was budgeted at a hundred and thirty thousand last year. I lowered it to a hundred and ten, and then Candace told me it needed to go back up to one twenty, so I did. So it's actually a decrease from one thirty to one twenty. Well, she says it has to. I'll listen to what she says. In the election budget, there are some employees, most of those people that work elections are hired to work temporary, and there's no fringes. But we do have some county employees in the tax office and the county clerk's office that work in there. It adds to the insurance and their retirement. So we added that to the elections budget. It's not a large amount. I think it's around seven hundred dollars total. In building maintenance, I increased the repairs and maintenance line item from one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand. That is because the work we've been doing this past year has increased to about that amount anyway, and there's additional work that we need to do. I'd like to do similar to what we did in this courtroom, in the large district courtroom, next year. So that is the reason for that increase. We also have just other various repairs that need to be made around the courthouse and other buildings that I feel like two hundred thousand is not enough, but I didn't want to go too high because I don't know what exactly that we're going to have until we get the certified values. Also added a auto purchase line item in the Commissioner's Court budget, I'm sorry, in the building maintenance budget, hoping to purchase another pool vehicle. The one that we put in service three weeks ago is used a whole lot more often than I thought it would be. So I'd like to try to get another one if we can, and I think that amount will buy us a nice used vehicle for another pool vehicle, maybe even less than that. And then, and Candace talks about the internet service that's in each of the Roden Bridge Departments, and they have to revisit that. But for now, we've left them like they are in the proposed budget.
Judge, I probably missed it. You had it in there, but if I remember correctly, Mr. Cooper had requested a significant increase in IT, not just in the salary for his assistant, but overall budget. What was the total?
Yeah.
Was that in your grant?
No, it's not in those notes.
He had increased it to seventy-five thousand.
Well, he increased it to a hundred and twenty-five, and I asked him to bring it down, and he did, to seventy-five thousand. And the amount that I included in his budget for, if I go to the right budget, for computers and parts, he'd requested seventy-five thousand, and I included fifty thousand. That's an increase from the amended budget, which is thirty-nine nine to fifty. That won't get us where we need to be upgrading all the computers that need to be upgraded, but we'll make a good start on it, and we'll try to catch the rest of them next year.
And again, on your proposal, is twenty-five dollars an hour for the assistant?
Yes.
And he's currently at eighteen?
No. What is he currently at?
It gave him an annual salary of fifty-two thousand. That's what was discussed.
He was at thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Increased to fifty-two.
Thanks.
Candace, did I miss anything? The... Yes, he requested to increase it to thirty-five thousand. I increased it to thirty-two thousand. And in travel and training, I did increase that from five hundred to one thousand, which is what the request was. Would you say that?
I'll say it.
His hourly rate was eighteen dollars and twenty-seven cents, and it was increased to twenty-five dollars.
Judges, I'm not able to comment quickly.
You're not? Sure.
Although that's not on the Sheriff's Office side, the budget, one of the things that we're really watching closely, and I talked to Cooper on, for us to stay what's called CEGIS compliant, DPS and FBI certifying, that we can use their databases, criminal histories, and check warrants on people, and store that protected information. You have to be FD compliant. You have to do certain things. Your software has to be a certain kind of the operating system on computers, Windows XP and Windows Seven. Windows XP no longer has support. If the software does not have support, CEGIS, this fancy board that certifies everything, won't certify you. We've got some HP programs, and I'm sure not just in our office, but in other areas of the courthouse, that we know is not being supported. And Windows Seven, the support for Windows Seven ends January.
January or February, yeah.
And so just to put a plug in there, that although it's not directly in our line item, a lot of what he does tech-wise is on our side because of some requirements we've got to do. And so I think that was part of one of the increases of why he was asking.
It was. A server, I believe, in your department.
Yeah, it's pretty much out of the control of whether we want to do it or not. If we want to be connected to DPS and FBI, we've got to make the upgrades, and that drop-in date is January or February. We're not, we're no longer going to support security patches for that software.
Well, this is just the proposed budget, based on the revenue that I feel like where we are now with the information we have from the Appraisal District. This is where I put us. Once we have our certified values, and I'll talk about that now, Ms. Smith has told us we'll have those, originally, we were supposed to have them July the eighteenth, and she told me Saturday it'll be July twenty-third. So once we have that, if we end up with more values and are able to, looks like we can forecast more revenue, then this is a line item that I think we should do.
You can only do what you can do, and I understand that. The other sheriffs, we're echoing. We've been talking, and that's the one item that honestly, really, nobody saw coming. And Microsoft is throwing some curves out there to us, and part of that is, they're not supporting that software anymore. And the moment that they don't support it, the DPS turns around and says, we're not going to certify you in compliance, and so we don't have a choice. But that was a curveball that we all got across the state this year for running that software.
And that's on Windows Seven?
Windows Seven, that is correct. And when they say they don't support it, what they're meaning is, they push out security patches and updates from time to time for potential viruses.
Yeah, they want to charge you more packages.
And once you get to that drop-in date, they no longer send you a fix for a security flaw, and that's where we're going to find ourselves in January or February. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Angela, did I miss anything?
Are you going to go over your budget notes? There were a couple on here that was not included, yeah. The software support for...
All right. So in the Roden Bridge Departments, the General Roden Bridge Department had a six thousand dollar line item for software support. I increased that to twenty thousand to be the actual amount. And then in the Flood Plane Administration Office, I added a line item for software support because she uses the same software for permits, and that amount is six thousand dollars. It's five thousand for the software support and one thousand dollars for the option to allow citizens to apply and pay for permits over the web. That will also allow citizens to apply for and receive the collection, or waste collection permits on the web as well. And she, Amanda's actually working with them to get that set up now. I think everything else I discussed, right?
Did you talk about the election budget? I know you did in court, the seventy-four thousand. You added that.
I added the annual note there, the nearly seventy-five thousand a year. I added that to the elections budget, and I can show that if you'll see it. I got that. Actually, you have that. It was in your notes. So I mentioned earlier that I added seven hundred dollars for the fringes for county employees. It's actually six hundred and twenty dollars. The other line item stayed the same, except for we added the note, the seventy-four thousand, six eighty-nine in equipment expenses. And that's the annual note for the scanners. The miscellaneous expenses remained at thirty thousand. And as you can see from the history, that may not be enough, but I added so much. I hated to keep adding more. All right. So if we talk about the total expenses for all four funds, Angela, can you provide that? She provided it to me this morning, and I wrote it down, and it's still on my desk.
The total expenses is twenty-three million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars. That consists of the General Fund at seventeen million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars, the jury fund at five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars, and the Roden Bridge at five million, eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and one dollars, and the Interest and Seeking Fund at three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars.
And that's based on the same tax rate that we currently have set at fifty-eight cents. There's no increase or decrease in the tax rate based on those figures. I'm sorry, based on the revenue. Looking at the revenue, and I know Ms. Cook's got some information she's probably going to pass out to us, but can you just tell us, last year, 2018, what was the collection rate for 2018 on current taxes for fiscal year eighteen?
Well, the same time period, the same time period from October to last year, June, we actually had an increase in our collections. We can give this if you'd like. We showed increase is not a lot. It's point zero, 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 six from the same time period.
But what's the amount? What's the rate, the collection rate on current taxes?
Current taxes is point nine, four, seven, five for that time period.
And when you sent me the report yesterday, it's actually point nine, five, something.
Yes. That includes some of July, when we first requested it.
Yes, ma'am.
We posted it to date, but we're only supposed to go through June thirtieth. So I reran it, and I have that here. So it's point nine, four, seven, five. This time, that time it was point nine, four, six, one. So there's not a, that's on current.
Yes, ma'am. And what she means by that is, we're also collecting taxes on delinquent taxes, so that doesn't get added in when you're forecasting revenues for the current year. And in the past, to my knowledge, all the counties and cities around here use a ninety-nine percent collection rate when they're forecasting revenues on ad valorem taxes. But looking at the last two years and talking to the auditor about it, I thought we might need to look at lowering that to ninety-eight percent. I discussed that with Ms. Cook. I think she's against doing that, and there are reasons why.
Well, I have information as to why.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a little more logical about that in the assessment. And if you do change it, which we always, when we do our tax, through the taxation, we always put a hundred percent. Because if you put a hundred percent, if you put ninety-five percent and you collect more, then you have to take that excess.
Right.
And it's going to go on to next year's. So they always tell us to put a hundred percent. We expect to collect a hundred percent for that reason.
Right.
Because if you do lower it to ninety-eight and you collect ninety-nine, then you're going to have to take that excess, excess funding, and it's going to go towards next year.
So is that for budget purposes, though? Like for our budget, is what we're discussing here? Because you're saying you use a hundred percent, but we only use ninety-nine when we do our budget.
This is for your tax rate.
Okay.
This is for your tax rate.
Yeah, and so the tax rate, we have to use a hundred, and we do. But on forecasting revenues for the budget, we've been using ninety-nine, I guess, for as long as I can tell, looking at the history. I just thought it might be a good idea, since the collections are a little bit lower the last two years, and I attributed that to the disaster. Maybe we should look at going down to ninety-eight. Angela said that the schools that she's familiar with actually use ninety-six percent. So this has no reflection on what the tax office does, surely, at least or the entire office, because once somebody gets delinquent, they turn it over to the collections. So there's no reflection on her office as far as what's being collected. It just has to do with what's coming in.
It just shows, our collections show a little recovery from Harvey last year, you know, of the last year, that little bit. Appraisals, of course, this year, as most everyone knows, went back up.
Yes.
To after Harvey. And so we expect that the values to be better than last year's values.
You see, we base our budget on ninety-nine percent collection rate, and when you're only collecting ninety-five percent, then your revenue, your budget is based off of that revenue. Your expenses is based off of that revenue. So that's why we considered lowering it to ninety-eight, to help offset some of this revenue that's not being collected.
And when we spoke, I apologize, that was, I was thinking of a one hundred percent for our tax rate.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's two separate things.
Yes, ma'am.
Included in your packets, the appraisal, the chief appraiser sent us a dated estimate of taxable value as of Saturday, July the thirteenth. It's three billion, three hundred eighty-six million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and sixty, seven hundred ninety thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That is up quite a bit from the estimate she gave us April the thirtieth, and quite frankly, makes me nervous to depend on that. But that's what we have. There's still fifty-seven million, over fifty-seven million in protests, so that's not included in that amount. Whatever is settled by July the twenty-third will be included in our certified values that we receive. And the reason that this has gone up so much is she did not have the mineral and industrial values on April the thirtieth, but she has them as of July the tenth, and that's why the increase in values from the estimate that we had gotten April the thirtieth. So based on what we have from the Appraisal District, what I'm looking at for the other miscellaneous revenue that we have in each of the funds, and the increase in expenditures that I plugged in for the proposed budget, the proposed budget balances, in fact, there's even a little bit, not a whole lot, but a little bit left that we could possibly look at, the IT budget increasing that somewhat. And there's some other line items that, for instance, repairs and what have you that need to be made here to the courthouse that I wanted to see about increasing. And then depending on what we get on certified values, if it's even higher than this, enough, I would like to, as we did last year, add some more to the Roden Bridge Departments. We can't, we can't do that much, but we can, we could add some to each of the Roden Bridge Departments, and I'd like to see us do that as well. But I don't have a printout to show you. If you'd like to, I'm going to ask the court, as I always have, to approve my proposed budget on July the thirtieth. If y'all would like to have a special meeting between now and then, we can. I want to take into consideration that Candace is not here that last week of July, and she's asked me to, she's asked me through Angela, did I want her to cancel her vacation, and I told her no. So if we're going to meet again to go over and have a printout ready for you to look at, and make sure that you all have time to review it before we vote on it, on July the thirtieth, we could meet next week. And I'm busy every morning, but I'm available almost every afternoon, and we could do that and possibly have it ready, say Tuesday afternoon, to look at. And does that sound feasible for the auditor's office?
Should we wait till after the twenty-third, when we're supposed to have... Should we wait till after the twenty-third, when we're supposed to have our certified values?
That would probably be a good idea.
I'm gonna be out that week.
Okay.
Actually, I'll be in Monday.
Yes, sir.
I'll be in Monday, and I'll be in probably afternoon, but we're scheduled to be in the classroom Tuesday. That's where my daughter.
Why don't you take all of us?
Hey, let's go.
I agree with Angela. We should wait till we get the certified values from the Appraisal District. And I don't wanna meet without the Commissioner, but I can always email it to you. You're gonna have access to it.
You gonna be here in the next meeting, on the third?
Yeah.
Yes. Why, we don't need to meet before then, too?
Well, if we, I submit a proposed budget on the thirtieth, and y'all make a bunch of changes to it, Candace is not here to make salary changes, and it gives us one day to make a bunch of changes and have it ready to file the next day.
Well, I'm like you with the situation everywhere in court. If we pursue a problem, we need to bring that up beforehand or we get it settled.
I mean, what I've given you is those expenses won't change unless we get a certified value that is a lot higher than we have now. I'd like to see us add to some of these other line items in the IT Department, building maintenance, and possibly Roden Bridge. That's the areas that I would look to increase unless I told you something different that I'm not remembering right now.
What are you scheduled? Did we do a Friday? Well, it had to be Friday afternoon for me, because twenty-six.
How about this? When I have it ready, I'll email it out to y'all, and if y'all wanna meet, let me know. We'll call and meet.
What is our schedule for budget hearings and stuff like that?
Those won't start until August after we, we gotta set, go through, setting the tax rate, and then we set budget hearings after that.
You change the budget at that time, so I would say go ahead and prepare it and file it.
It's up to me to file a proposed budget. I just always get, I want y'all's blessing on that. I don't wanna file a proposed budget that y'all are against. Already know one's against it. I don't want two more.
I can't see that much of change.
Well, anything, well, I'm like Mr. Peller. Do you file a proposed budget, anything that's different from what you've already presented to us, make sure we're aware of it. We can change the place.
If you have a proposed.
I can't talk to more than one of them.
You can change it up to the day you do the budget.
Together, right?
Yeah, we can. Just doesn't give us a lot of time to, when you make one change in the General Fund, it affects all the other funds. How she's gotta calculate the ad valorem taxes.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go do a proposal.
When will we know the effective tax rate?
Do what?
We know the effective tax rate.
Ms. Cook, I don't know if you got my message this morning. Is there any way we could get a preliminary effective tax rate before we receive the certified values? It's just a yes or no.
That's not a yes or no. We'll try. We will try. I don't trust it to do it through that, but.
Nothing we'd hold you to. We'd just like to see kinda where we stand.
Yes, sir. We do not have the bonus document. We'll check when we get back to see if we have an opening for that. We do have the sheriff's information, the officer's information. We have that.
Okay.
So we can put all that in and see where we stand.
Okay.
The good news is we have that pipeline going in first.
Well, we got another one going in pre- shake three.
So we're adding to the budget.
Yeah, those pipelines are good money. But it'd just be interesting to see the effective tax rate if we have had quite a bit of value increase.
I agree.
You know, 'cause we got a lot of protests this year, and it'd just be nice.
Alvin, when does that three point five percent take effect? Is it next year?
I think so.
Yeah.
Takes effect September the first for next year.
For next year, next year's budget.
Well, the rate we're setting is next year's rate, so we can't go over three point five percent. Is that right? And I wouldn't want to either.
So even if it's a reprieve this year, it'd be the next. I thought on the list, sir, if I saw that.
Is it gonna be for the next year?
Yeah, I think it's for the next year.
Gotta be put in there in their back's budget, though. Who knows what they're gonna?
Yeah, because, anyway.
It's, and that's a toss-up of what.
I saw a lot of counties are going up eight percent this year because of that, and I don't wanna be a part of that.
I was gonna ask if the counterfeit dollar came from Austin.
She had the one hundred dollar bill.
Was it counterfeit from Austin?
Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say or ask or anything while we're still in the workshop? Candace? Thank you. All right, anything else? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I guess I have a question from another. When is this Flexing Station gonna open?
We're waiting on the perm.
It's ready. Soon as we get the TCQ permit, it's gonna open.